One of the busiest general aviation airports in the world. But because it's not a commercial passenger facility, many locals hadn't visited the airport till now.
I've never seen an air museum. I love seeing planes.
This community airport, this general aviation airport, is one of the busiest in the world, and it's extremely important for the San Fernando Valley.
And with the updating of runway 16 right, hope is the airport will continue to serve the neighborhood for years to come. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The Van Nuys Airport observation area is open to the public daily from sunrise to sunset, and airfield tours are held each week with a minimum of 20 people required. Some of the city's most iconic landmarks aren't the buildings themselves, but the art painted on them. Anna Marcos tells us about the city's efforts to help preserve the city's mural art.
Are they art or eyesore? For 10 years, murals on private property were banned in the city of angels. But LA's wall art is about to make a comeback after city leaders voted to bring it back.
The city of Los Angeles was once known as the mural capital of the world, whether it was in Venice or the east side of Los Angeles, some places in downtown. As early as the 1930s, when we had Zicaro's plane, one of his first murals here at Placita Albera, the city of Los Angeles was known as a place where it supported the arts, where we had free expression on our walls.
Murals were banned in 2002 after sign companies sued the city for allowing the murals but not allowing their advertising. The city has now gotten around that by putting murals in a whole new category. They are no longer part of the sign code. They are now works of art.
I want murals all around us. Thank you.
My name is Regina Bell. I'm a artist. I am a muralist.
I quit my job seven years ago to nurture the gift that God has given me, and I am ready to paint.
However, there will be restrictions on size and location, and for now, murals will not be allowed on single-family homes.
I certainly believe that the owner of a single-family property should have the right to put a mural on if she wants to.
Council members are working on a new ordinance that would allow murals on single-family homes in neighborhoods like districts 1 and 14, where mural art is part of the culture.
It was our First Amendment expression. It gave us a sense of identity, meaning, and place. That's the significance of this motion today.
But some express concerns with issues like vandalism and the city's inability to regulate content due to First Amendment rights.
There's a significant number of complaints just on billboards and the messaging.
We never wanted murals to be neglected or removed, because we're all for it. The problem is, how does legislation write the law to protect from vandalism?
I did not hear even one single call or letter in support from anyone residing in my district. So I am going to support my district in not wanting to see murals.
Still, the vote has gone through. Mayor Eric Garcetti will now have to sign the bill, and artists will have to apply to register their murals. It may be several months before we see the first new murals go up. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Meanwhile, the amendment to allow murals on single-family homes in some neighborhoods is making its way through committee. A City Hall drive netted a surprising number of one donation item for the homeless. It's something homeless advocates say is sorely needed but rarely given.
Wow.
Not 100, not 1,000, but more than 15,000 pairs of socks donated to the Midnight Mission downtown. The two-week-long sock drive was launched by Councilman Joe Buscagino in response to a gag gift of crazy socks given by Council President Herb Wesson to the council members on the first day of the new council session.
We launched the LA City Council Socks Drive as a way to pay forward our sock gift given to us by Council President Herb Wesson. Today, as you see before you, thousands of socks have flooded our individual offices as a response to our call for donations.
From a gag to a gaggle of socks, the Midnight Mission will distribute the generous donations to organizations citywide, and it would not have been possible without community involvement.
The students of Dana Middle School, Ms. Crowe's leadership class in San Pedro for donating 500 pairs, students at Harry Bridges Elementary School, Gulf Avenue Elementary School in Wilmington for donating 500 pairs, San Pedro High School, Ms. Carcamo's leadership class. Collectively, CD15 brought in approximately 5,000 pairs of socks.
When it comes to donations for the homeless, food and clothes usually come to mind first, but rarely socks. The head of the Midnight Mission explained just how essential a pair of socks is to those living on the streets. He spoke via a video message shown in council chambers.
We thank you for recognizing the need of those that are suffering from homelessness here in our community by providing these socks. You know, we might not think socks are a big issue in our lives, but for a homeless person, a new pair of fresh socks is the difference between a good day and a bad.
I remember being homeless, and I remember what it was like to not have clean socks and not have clean clothes.
And it looks like it's 15,000 pairs and counting, as Councilman Tom Labonge made a last-minute donation, and Councilman Mike Bonin pledges even more socks.
We have a large and growing population of homeless children, so I'm going to go out later today and buy some children's socks and add this to the donation.
Yes, fantastic.
Generosity guaranteed to warm not only hearts, but many at toes on a cold night. And at last count, the donation was closer to 20,000 pairs with donations still flooding in. A Mr. Sid McSudian representing downtown business owners donated 7,000 pairs of socks. Councilman Buscagino's office brought in around 5,000 pairs, and Councilman Mitchell Englander's office, 4,000 pairs. A $50,000 reward for an unsolved hidden run and also for an unsolved murder. Also, the mayor holds office hours at City Hall and in Van Nuys. These stories and more in City Beat. The city council has approved a $50,000 reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of those responsible for the August 3 shooting of 17-year-old Hamilton High School football captain Bijon Shustari. He was the front passenger in a vehicle that was driving north on Crenshaw Boulevard approaching Vernon Avenue. That's when the suspect's vehicle approached.
At least one suspect from that vehicle began shooting into the victim's vehicle that he was riding, and it struck him multiple times. He was transported to Cedar Sinai Hospital, where he succumbed to his injuries on August 5.
If you have any information on this crime, call the LAPD's Criminal Gang Homicide Division at 213-485-4341. Council members have also approved a $50,000 reward in the case of an unsolved hidden run incident that caused the death of 35-year-old Michael Boninomi. Police say Boninomi was crossing Ventura Boulevard in Studio City near Fairway Avenue on Saturday, August 17, around 11:45 p.m., when he was struck by a vehicle and killed.
He was born and raised here in Los Angeles and was a respected advertising professional, an accomplished musician, and a very special friend to so-so many. We can't even count the number of friends that were at his memorial. We think maybe 300 people came to our little house, and it was just such a testament to him. He loved the Dodgers, he loved the Lakers, the farmer's market, sunsets on the beach, and a barbecue with friends.
Police are looking for a white, two-door, 2008-to-2010 Mercedes-Benz that, at the time, had black paper license plates with yellow lettering. If you live closer to Van Nuys and would like to meet with a member of Mayor Eric Garcetti's office, you'll be able to do that without driving to City Hall downtown. Garcetti announced that a member of his constituent services team will be stationed at Van Nuys City Hall Tuesday through Friday during regular business hours to offer in-person assistance. You can sign up for appointments to speak with the mayor or a member of his staff by visiting the mayor's help desk at City Hall or by going through la mayor.org. You can also call the mayor's office or make an appointment on the mayor's Facebook page. SB 566, a proposed law to legalize the sale and growth of hemp in California, is getting a down vote from LA City Councilmember Bernard Parks and much of the city council. Hemp comes from the same species as marijuana and looks similar to it in the wild, but is not as potent.
What a concern would be is that those that use the hemp market as a cover for selling and growing marijuana, if upon being arrested and recovery, it would require the law enforcement agency to then do analysis on the hemp to determine the level of THC, and none, no lab in the state is equipped to do that.
The hemp law was approved by the legislature last year but vetoed by the governor. Some of LA's buffest bodies compete for the title of Muscle Beach Champion and an incredible honor for a bodybuilding icon. Gil Reyes reports from the Muscle Beach Championships in Venice.
Braun and beauty mixing it up at what many consider to be the Mecca of muscle and fitness were at the famed Venice Beach Gym, also known as The Pit, where some of LA's buffest bodies compete at this annual Labor Day physique contest. It's also where TV's Incredible Hulk receives an award.
I trained here years ago with the other bodybuilders, like Arnold and then other people, because I was doing anything at the time. As a matter of fact, I slept on the beach a couple of times. I had money to get an apartment, so I remember I just wanted to be here. If you fast forward 40 years later, here I am now, and this is amazing.
Two-time Mr. Universe famous actor and LA County Sheriff's Deputy Lou Ferrigno is formally inducted into the Muscle Beach Hall of Fame. Doing the honors, Marvel Comics icon Stan Lee, who co-created the Hulk character.
But he's also one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, and I am so proud to call Lou Ferrigno my good friend.
Stan Lee also co-created Spider-Man, Iron Man, The Avengers, The X-Men, and a number of other muscle-bound Marvel heroes. For that, he receives his own award from the city of Los Angeles.
Stan Lee is and always will be a cultural icon. Enough said, excelsior.
Incredible physique or not, all are invited to train like an Iron Man or Iron Woman at the Venice Beach Gym, which is just steps away from the sand. A one-day pass costs $10. A year's membership is $150, a bargain compared to some of the other big chain fitness centers. At the Venice Beach Gym, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Muscle Beach Gym is operated by the LA Department of Recreation and Parks. And in this week's list of things to do, an '80s movie to help end the summer, celebrating Mexican independence and fashion from some of television's biggest shows on exhibit. Labor Day may be behind us, but summer is still not officially over yet. The LA State Historic Park at 1245 North Spring Street downtown is hosting an end-of-summer movie screening of the '80s teen classic, The Breakfast Club, starring '80s teen queen Molly Ringwald and the rest of the so-called Brat Pack. Takes place on Saturday, September 14, from 5:30 to 11:00 p.m. There will be food trucks and live music before the screening to keep everyone happy. Go to eatseehere.com for the cost of admission and other details. On Saturday and Sunday, September 14 and 15, celebrate Mexican independence at Overa Street Plaza downtown, also known as El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument. The annual celebration includes live music, dancing, carnival games and rides, and exhibit booths. The fun takes place both days from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. For a detailed map or directions and other information, go to elpueblo.lacity.org. And if you haven't already done so, head on over to the ongoing Seventh Annual Art of Television Costume Design Exhibition at the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising, or FITM, Museum and Galleries downtown at 919 South Grand Avenue. Over 120 original costumes from 15 popular television series and miniseries are featured in the exhibit. That includes costumes from the HBO hit Game of Thrones, to the British import Downton Abbey, to the NBC comedy Parks and Recreation. Go to fitmuseum.org for museum hours and details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. An iconic attraction here in the city celebrates 76 years of helping children and families make lasting memories. And to mark the occasion, one council member invited parkgoers to enjoy free rides one recent afternoon. This mother and child are making lasting memories atop this 76-year-old carousel at Griffith Park. A ride on a merry-go-round is a rite of passage for many babies and toddlers, and at a ripe old age of nine, Nina Fisher is already a veteran.
I've been on this merry-go-round a couple of times.
To help mark the carousel's 76th anniversary and to celebrate the unofficial end of summer, Councilman Tom Labonge treated parkgoers to free rides on the historic Griffith Park merry-go-round. And as this plaque reminds riders, Franklin Roosevelt was president, Walt Disney made Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, and gasoline was 10 cents a gallon three-quarters of a century ago.
It was put together in 1926, and from 1926 to 1936, it was done in San Diego for the exposition road fair. And then in 1937, it came up here, and it's been here ever since.
The carousel, a four-row Spillman Carousel, is the only one left of its kind.
We have all four rows, all horses, all jumpers, and we go quite fast. We go about 14 miles an hour.
The memories made are also one of a kind.
I grew up with my seven brothers here in Griffith Park. Parents would take us over here, and we'd ride, which was fun. There were no gates here. You could kind of hop on. Oh, I take my dates here. I still date my wife here.
It made me dizzy, and it was noisy. And I went up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down.
I've seen kids grow up, go to college, and now they have their own families, and they come back, and they're like, they remember me.
Proving that a simple 76-year-old ride that goes round and round can create memories that last a lifetime. And more ride trivia. The carousel has 1,026 light bulbs and each month about 50 burnout. Also, the horse tails on the ride are made from real horse hairs and are from the original ride. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at la city view.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Parents distinguish faculty, mom, dad. Today's lesson, how to exercise with your kids and save the planet. First, you must believe, B, that your children really are the future. Second, you must do. Instead of jumping in the car, let's go for a walk, or a ride, or even a bike ride. No pollution, no oil, no gas, and as long as you obey ultra safety rules, we're cool. Lastly, you have to live. Live into our big, beautiful, healthy future. We do live. Watch the road.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city
Good morning. This is Los Angeles City Council. This is Tuesday, the 10th day. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscagino, Sardio, Englander, Fuentes, Weiser, Caress, Cricorian, Labonge, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
A first order of business.
Approve the minutes.
Mr. Fuentes moves, Mr. Bonin second. So ordered.
Next is committee resolutions for approval.
Let's have Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Ofero seconds. So ordered.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
If we could all rise for the flag salute to the United States, and I would like to ask Mr. Fuentes to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everybody would put their right hand over their heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, if you could direct your attention to the agenda, and Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, first, there's a request to continue items 1A and B to October 8, and to continue item 25 to October 11.
So ordered.
Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing.
Notice for public hearing. Members, any specials on 1 or 2? Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there are cards on items 1 and 2.
Thank you. The sergeants just brought them, so we'll hold 1 and 2. Next items, 3 through 16.
Yes, items 3 through 16 are items which public hearings have been held.
Mr. Bonin.
Mr. Englander's request, item 10, special, please.
Item 10 special. Any other specials 3 through 16? No other specials on 3 through 16? Mr. Fuentes.
If you could hold 3, 5, and 6, and 7 for Mr. Weiser.
3, 5, and 6, and 7. How long you want us to hold them? Okay, that's the old line. We'll hold them. 3, 5, 6, and 7. You got a nice laugh. Thank you. Okay, you got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay.
There he is.
So nothing else? Hold item 8, too? For amending motion. See nothing specials other than that? So open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next group, please.
Item 17 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
For consideration, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, so they're for consideration. Next move. Any specials on 17 through 27, members? Mr. Weiser?
Thank you, Mr. President. I now say we note and file item 17, and we'll set a new hearing date when all parties agree on this item.
All right, note and file on 17.
Excuse me, there are cards on item 17.
Cards on 17, so we'll hold that. Mr. Parks, 27?
27.
27, Mr. Parks. Any other specials, members?
Yes, cards on item 26.
26. So no other comment on those items, and we could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, Madam Clerk, we just got handed a card on 23 by the fine sergeant of arms, so we're going to have to reconsider 23 when the cards come, okay? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Oh, so 23 is for consideration. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes council to items called special.
Okay, so items that are called special. Let's start out right here. Item number one, special by cards, Mr. John Walsh of Hollywood, California. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. There are children in the audience, therefore I give the G-rated version of what I have to say. I know nobody's watching us. No children are watching us on Channel 35. They have to be dragged here to watch. Always a pleasure to speak in front of Mr. Labonge, who was our councilman until they moved the district. Number 1 concerns protests and appeals relative to nuisance abatement. Well, I live in the nuisance abatement capital of the world, Hollywood, and actually, you are doing an excellent job on nuisance abatement. When you do a good job, I say it. When you escalate, I escalate. When you de-escalate, I de-escalate. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org. Go there right now, see what's happening. Thank you very much. That completes Mr. Walsh's comments. Thank you. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. We want to hold the appointees at this time for a moment to run through the agenda. This is item number 2. Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh. Item number two is before us now, members.
Item number two is a hearing. Appeals or objection proposed weed and brush abatement assessments. What happens here is that if you own property and you don't keep it clean to prevent forest, major fires in the city, then the city comes in and does it for you and hands you a bill. That's fine. That's great. I was here in the late 70s and early 80s when we had major fires in the city of Los Angeles, when I had soot, red soot, all over my apartment, and I don't live in the hills, from the burning trees. You would do it... Let me tell you how you can tell this city does a good job. Almost the entire city of Oakland, the hills, were burned down a few years ago, because they don't enforce their laws up there. That's Oakland. Here, where you enforce the brush abatement, we haven't had a major fire, brush fire or forest fire in this city in, what, 20 years? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, stick by, we're gonna go 17 next. On this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Could you take number 17, Madam Clerk?
Item 17 called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Teresa Marquez.
Okay, again, this concerns street lighting. Now, and concerns Norfolk's and Soto's street lighting. Come to Hollywood and you see the best street, all our side streets are lit. Why are our streets lit? Because activists 10, 20, 30 years ago fought for it. We still have our, thanks to Mr. Labange also, our original light fixtures, you know, the old-fashioned ones. The rest of the city, when I go to the rest of the city, I am appalled at how when you walk off the main street, it's totally dark. That's why I'm saying that these people should fight for your... You have to fight for your lights, and nothing, nothing discourages crime more than a well-lit neighborhood. Fight for your lighting. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Very good.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Teresa Marcus. I'm from Boyle Heights, third generation. I came before you to help us fight the excite, the arsenic pollution in Boyle Heights. The information that you passed stated 110,000 people. That is so wrong. It's 110,000 residents and business. So you multiply that for at least five people, it's 550,000, half a million people. If you want to check it, call AQMD, they realize the mistake they made, and nobody seems to, in the city of LA, seems to understand the impact of half a million people being exposed to arsenic, lead, ammonia, and so on, from our burning city and especially excite. The other thing that I want to ask is, Weezer, councilman Weezer, you need to have a community meeting on this issue that are so important. Yesterday, we had over 20 people from different cities that are being affected, councilmen from different cities, and you were not there.
Mr. President, I don't believe this is regarding this item.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please follow this item. Thank you so much, Ms. Marquez. Thank you. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. Weezer?
Mr. President, this item concerns street lighting, and we have some issues with local residents. I'd like to note and file this item until our staff works with our local residents on this issue.
Very good.
So we can file this item, please. And for the record, we've had a number of community meetings on a neighboring facility, recycling plant that has been polluting the area. It's in Vernon, and we've been working diligently on that matter.
We know that you have. Thank you and your staff for that work. So see another one of the speakers? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes, so ordered. Number 23, please.
Item 23 called special for cards.
A special card. We welcome him back, Sean Murphy from North Hollywood, California, the fastest public speaker in Los Angeles.
Item 23, I'm for it. Thank you. Stay tuned for general public comment.
Very good, Sean. Thank you so much. Let's open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Number 26.
Number 26, called special for cards.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to JWalshConfidential, 100,000 server requests a month. This is number 26, it concerns... I'm always suspicious when you up here are opposing a bill, because most of these bills are Democrat bills to begin with. This limits the ability of any nonprofit organization that receives public funding from a local government from participating in state and local ballot campaigns. Well, we have just too much abuse of nonprofits like AIDS Healthcare Foundation, who wants me and everybody here to spend $50 million, because he's in a snit fit, Mr. Weinstein, with Zeb Yaroslavsky, and he wants the city to take it over. So I think, although this bill might not be perfect, take over the public health from the county, this bill might not be perfect. I think we have to put some added limits on nonprofit organizations that receive public funding from participating in local ballot campaigns. Remember, go to GuideStar.com, you get all the information for free on nonprofits. It's nonprofit for us, for the people who work at the nonprofits, for the people on... These people are making $300,000, $400,000. Michael Weinstein makes $300,000 a year. It doesn't go to AIDS Healthcare, it goes into his pocket. So I think we need reform, reform, reform. HollywoodHighlands.org, stay tuned for public comment. I'll rock the Cosmo with that.
All right, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, so that's complete. Let's, Mr. Parks, you ready for 27? Okay, 27, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring everyone's attention on this piece of legislation, and it comes out of a statewide commission that addresses the issue of voluntary confessions. Found out over a period of time that these confessions are not necessarily those that you can rely on, and in fact, in many instances, individuals are confessing to crimes that they did not commit, and it's a significant high rate of those that are juveniles. The only issue I wanted to bring up is that the original legislation, when we authored this motion, was that it was going to have a variety of crimes. It's been amended to only address murder when juveniles are involved, so that there is a requirement to have videotaping of the confession or the interview if they're in a locked facility. And so that's the only change since we did the motion, and I'd ask for an aye vote.
Okay. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just noted from the bill analysis that this bill has opposition from both the juvenile court judges of California and the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, so I thought it might be in order to hear from the police department about whether they've considered this bill and have any concerns about its impact on law enforcement's ability to fight crime in this city. So if there's anybody from the police department here who could...
Detective Sergeant Harry Eddles here.
I might be able to answer that. We called LAPD on this bill, and we were advised that they actually sat on the committee that made the recommendation.
Okay, well, if we could hear from the department, I'd be interested to know whether they support the bill in its current form.
Morning, councilmembers. I'm Captain William Hayes, commanding officer, robbery homicide division. At this point in time, Chief Beck has not had an opportunity to fully review the bill. Also, he has not taken a position on it for the police department. However, in reviewing it, we are generally supportive of it. We do have some concerns, though, regarding the funding, regarding the equipment that would be required to do it. In the bill, there is a caveat for state funding, but we aren't sure how that would be accomplished.
So the bill provides that whatever equipment is necessary would be an expense borne by the state, but we don't know whether that would in fact be implemented? Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm sorry that I haven't read the actual bill language, I've only looked at the bill analysis. Is there a potential for liability on the part of the city in the event that the equipment, for example, should break down during an interrogation? Or is there a grounds for dismissal of charges if the equipment should fail during the interrogation?
The way the bill is currently written, there are caveats in it that which state should there be a malfunction of the equipment that they would be, that they would have to petition the court to explain why it occurred. What it does, though, it does put the onus of burden on the prosecution to prove that the equipment malfunctioned, and then to allow the statements to be admissible in the court.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, it's a sensible policy, and certainly we want to try to prevent false confessions, and particularly with regard to juveniles. I think I would feel more comfortable if the police department had a full opportunity to review it. Mr. Parks, do you know if there's anything? Is it time-sensitive? Is this coming up for a vote in the legislature soon?
The other issue I think is important, and Captain, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there something in there that says that it's part of the jury instructions? If there's some issue about the failure to do the videotaping, that there's a jury instruction that's obligated at the court?
Correct, Mr. Parks. There are two things that are written into it. One is that if there's a failure in the equipment or there's a failure to do the recording, and the prosecution has to explain and why to the judge, and then the judge can make a determination whether the statement is admissible. The other caveat in it is if the statement is taken as admissible, there is a jury instruction that says that it wasn't done in compliance with the mandating recording, and that they have to, that the jury should evaluate the value of the statements and how they were obtained.
Okay.
But to answer you, my understanding, it is moving.
Okay. My understanding, Mr. Parks, Mr. Krikorian, is that it is coming up on the third reading before the Senate?
Okay. I think you've responded to my concerns, so it seems like a reasonable bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. Okay. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Just in answer to Mr. Krikorian's question, looked up, it is on third reading, the assembly, so it could be done as early as this Friday in terms of the timing, and so getting us on record is good, both for the legislative process and ideally for the signature process, but it could be this week.
Mr. Parks?
We just got information that they're gonna stop voting on the evening of Thursday, so they will not be getting Friday sessions.
We'll see.
All right, Madam Clerk, there's no other speakers on the queue? Okay. Let's open the roll. Do we have a card? After the item, please fill out a public comment card. Thank you. For public comment. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, council should reconsider item 26.
All right, for consideration, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes.
There's a request to receive and file item 26.
So ordered. Do we need to vote on that?
Counsel can do without objection.
Without objection. Thank you. Next item.
Item 10, an amending motion, 10A, has been circulated.
10A has been circulated, so we're gonna vote on item 10A?
Item 10, as amended by 10A.
Okay, very well. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Very good. Next item, I'm gonna call on general public comment right now. Could I have John Burka? Followed by Joshua Boss, is that correct? And Sean Murphy? Okay.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. I'm a little out of my element here, I've never been here before, the council before. I'm here to advise this body that there is pending before the California Supreme Court a case titled Melinda Burke, who happens to be my daughter, versus Oakwood Worldwide. And it is not, what is pending before the California Supreme Court is a request that the court grant review of decision. The case, as a, I'm sorry, as councilmember Bloomingfield might remember, it was the first case in the nation to be filed against a residential landlord by a tenant based on the landlord's refusal to restrict smoking in the unenclosed common areas of the complex, which, now, this, the case was actually filed in June of 2006, and what I brought with me today is a copy of the resolution that this body passed unanimously on August 8th, 2008. It was presented by Councilman Parks, and some, I guess it's one motion, excuse me, a verbal motion that was adopted in November of 2010, was presented, I believe, by Councilmember Labange, addressing this issue and directing the city attorney to draft an ordinance along the lines of the ordinance that was then in effect in Calabasas and other cities, protecting people from secondhand smoke in areas where they congregate. The posture of the case, as I said, is Melinda, who was represented by Attorney Michael Sohagian and me, lost at the trial on her claim for public nuisance, under the California Public Nuance statute, before a trial judge, and who ruled that her exposure to secondhand smoke...
Mr. Burka, what we're gonna do, Debbie Kim, my legislative director, will meet you at the ropes, just to follow up on that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time on that. We have Justin Bass, Mr. Parks?
On the speaker that was here, David Michelson in the city attorney's office is now working on that ordinance, and that may be a contact for you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Boss?
Hey, Justin Bass, I'm from Venice. I'd like to talk to you about fiber optic cable. We need to open up the fiber optic cable throughout Los Angeles so we can have TV competition. I need to get reasonable prices on my internet and cable service. We live in Hollywood, this is the entertainment capital of the world, this is content, let's get it, come on. Verizon FiOS needs to be able to access that, let's incentivize them to do it. I live in a building that does not allow new satellite dishes. I have to use Time Warner Cable. When that blackout occurred, I lose two, I lose nine, I lose the local channels? Come on. I can't go anywhere else, there's no repercussions for these guys, you guys gotta hold their feet to the fire. Please. I wanna watch TV and I wanna use the internet without emptying my pockets and having people trip me up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day, you look good in the suit.
Good morning, City Council. I'm back, y'all, from summer break. Yeah, everybody misses me, I know. We need to discuss some things, City Council. You know St. Charles is under renovation? We need a temporary crosswalk? Just a temporary crosswalk, Tom. We need to discuss it with Monsignor Gallagher, people are still jaywalking. I'm surprised anybody's not getting hit. They're not slowing down for us fruitioners to get to the social centers for mass. We need to... We need, we need to fix that. If you can help, I would appreciate it. We need to sit down with the Monsignor Gallagher. I'm sure we can work something out. Our streets need to be repaid. We need to bring back video conferencing in Van Nuys. I'm sorry, but we do. I'll go once in a while if we get it back, but I like coming down here. All that protest in Hollywood, I didn't like it. We, I know there's a problem in Syria. I hope they get it resolved. I waited for the 156 for an hour and a half. It's not right. We need to close less Hollywood Boulevard, and it's going to be closed again this weekend. I read the thing on the Metro, 13th through the, that weekend, and the choir, St. Charles choir will be coming back this Sunday from its summer break. Thank you.
Thank you. John Walsh, followed by Donna Perlmann. Is Donna here? Donna? You're next after Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Notice how smoothly the meetings run when Councilman Labange is running it. It isn't the chaos that when Herb or Mr. Englander is running it. You de-escalate, we de-escalate. You escalate, we escalate. And incidentally, you new members, I love you. Now, anybody who watches this, you know, when I was a kid, I went to movies, everyone wasn't, the actors were not looking at the camera. Then I saw Bugs Bunny and Bob Hope, and they pointed right at the camera and started talking to the audience. And that's how I learned at age four, you are the ones that count. You, the people out there, you have come to our website. One day last week, I got 1,400 in one hour, right from here. Okay, let me tell you right now, short form, we have the most dangerous funicular angel's flight, we call it devil's flight, in the world. Do you know who Mr. Leon Praport is? He was a concentration camp survivor. He survived Buchenwald, but he did not survive in 2010. His trip to LA, he was crushed in the machinery of the funicular that goes up and down, up and down. You know, the Red Line has had millions and millions of passengers and has killed nobody. The handful of passengers you have, and you're responsible for Angel's Flight. And now again, it's closed, it's under inspection, it's derailed. You must take it away from the wellborns. And I am doing a big post on the blood of Jewish concentration camp victim who was killed, and his wife was seriously injured and brain damaged. Because they made it out of Nazi Germany, but they sure as hell didn't, heck, didn't make it out of Los Angeles. HollywoodHighlands.org, check it out.
Hey, Donna, you want to sit right there? Because I want to have the planning commissioners come up now. Are you okay with time, Donna? Thank you. We're going to hold public comment at this time. We'll get it after these issues. We have some distinguished nominees from Mr. Garcetti, our mayor, Mr. Weezer, first and foremost.
Yes, thank you, Mr.
By order of the President's City Council, I hereby salute you on your birthday today, the 10th of September. Twenty-nine years old, looking good there. Twenty-nine there.
Thank you. Underline the 29, please.
29. Hold the line at 29. And all the commissioners could come to the table if you want.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to take these in two groups, please. First, if we could take Renee Dake Wilson to the City Planning Commission and also Ms. Martha Segura, who's also being appointed to the City Planning Commission. Thank you and welcome. Colleagues, we heard testimony from both of these individuals in the Planning Land Use and Management Committee, and these are two individuals who have significant experience, both in terms of their service to the city, their civic duties, but also their knowledge about planning issues. And so I'd like to ask both of you to, if you could briefly introduce yourselves, and then we'll open it up for questions or comments from any of our colleagues. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Weezer. Thank you, council, for having us here today. I'm really honored. My name is Martha Segura, and I just want to thank everyone for their leadership and their commitment to brighter Los Angeles, and I think that's what Renee and I, and not to speak for Renee, but I think that's what we represent, just adding on to that brighter vision of Los Angeles and bringing our collective backgrounds to the Planning Commission. Mine is in public health, so I've dedicated most of my life to contributing to the health and wellness of communities, and I understand there's a health and wellness chapter being added to the general plan, but I'm very excited to learn about the rest of the general plan and the 35 community plans and being a real asset to the city of Los Angeles. So I thank you so much.
My name is Renee Dake Wilson, and I'm a resident of CD4, and I'm so pleased to be here today and to witness this great process. I'm an architect, and I think it's important to have the built environment represented on the Planning Commission. I'll be the third architect, I believe, is historic number in the Planning Commission. I'm also very interested in social justice causes, and I think that balancing both of those needs on the Planning Commission is really important, and I strive to take every project as it comes and commit great energy and attention and attendance to the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Weezer, we thank Mr. Garcetti. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you very much. We'll see you, uh...
Thank you.
The clerk will be sworn in. Mr. Weezer, continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could take items five and six together now. This is an appointment of Mr. Joseph Halper to the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission and also the reappointment of Ms. Gail Kennard to the Cultural Heritage Commission. And thank you again for being with us. We heard testimony from both of these individuals again in the Plum Committee and want to thank Ms. Kennard for her service on the Cultural Heritage Commission, which has been very valuable in the past. It's a tough area because we all, like I said in committee, have a difference of opinion about what is historical, and so it's always difficult to sort those things out. But I wanted to thank both of you. These are actually both reappointments. Mr. Halper is also being reappointed to the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission, so thank you for your service. Again, you could briefly introduce yourselves, and then we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. My name again is Gail Kennard. I am a native Angeleno, and I'm very pleased to be reappointed to the commission. I carry the legacy of my late father, Robert Kennard, who was one of the pioneering architects here in Los Angeles, and I have a great respect for the work of the Cultural Heritage Commission. I've appreciated the leadership of our chairman and the fellow commissioners, and I have a particular interest in the preservation of mid-century modern architecture. I'm also a resident of CD4.
Good morning. My name is Joe Halper. I'm in the 11th District, Mike Bonnens' district, and I have, my experience on the Planning Commission for the West LA has been a great one. My colleagues have given me the premise that diligence is very important, and I've learned a lot from them, and hopefully I'll be able to continue in their good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonnens.
Thank you. Just wanted to rise colleagues to say a few words about Mr. Halper, who's one of my constituents, as he noted. Also, give a shout out to his wife, Arlene, who's standing over there. Mr. Halper has been a longtime civic leader. Before he was in Los Angeles, he was an active civic leader in New York, where he was involved with recreation and parks issues, and we certainly hope that's an opportunity you get to have here in Los Angeles as well in the future. Joe has served on the West LA APC over the past few years, and he's brought a community perspective and a lot of wisdom to the deliberations and a lot of diligence. And I just want to thank you for everything you do for parks issues, for veterans, in other civic affairs and on this commission. And I'm, I think you're a little crazy for doing this again, but I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on that. Both of you, good work all the way around, and Ms. Kennard, thank you from your husband, your dad's memory. He remembers design where the Mexican consulate is, right on Sixth and Parkview, one of the buildings when the 4th District used to be down there, and your sister was a great contributor to our city's success. Both good appointees. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Very good. Next item.
Item 8, amended motion has been circulated.
Item 8 has been circulated, but we do have cards. Mr. Herman. Beverly Tatum, is that right, Beverly? Mr. Herman, you speak first, please.
So many deferred items, never gives the public a chance to speak. You know, when we have items and we're coming here to open up to our part, our portion, our...
Speak on the issue, please, and I'll explain committee work later.
What item are we on, Mr. Labange? What item are we on?
Eight.
There we go. Eight, from the top. Continuing consideration of mitigation, negative declaration, planning and land use management. Have we had any audits on our plan use? Because there's many, many, not just negligence, sure, take a picture. When we interfere with public comment, how do you expect us to stay on topic? We have a right to speak and be heard, right, Marion in Van Nuys? We will get there eventually. Now let me get back to topic. So, under this ordinance, we question, why can't we have an audit? Why can't we see the checks and balance, the proposals in its full when it comes to these types of items? Now that I have your attention, I'm sure there'll probably be an audit, but that's my recommendation and my motion for this council. We need more audits to sustain ourselves when it comes to the management committees, because there's so much abuse in our city that we need to get a grip and stop taxing the taxpayers on these type of items. Hold my time.
Beverly Palmer.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of appellants Laura Lee and Bill Shark, Jack Cash, adjacent residents to the proposed project, as well as Burton Way Foundation and Beverly Wilshire Homes Association. Appellants support the project as conditioned in the new motion, item 8A, by Councilmember Coretts. This is a RAS4 project. It's adjacent to 33-foot-high, R2-zoned residential units. A simple change is required, which Councilmember Coretts' ordinance achieves. The project, as originally proposed, had a 45-foot step down in the rear. At the Plum Committee, the Plum Committee correctly denied the applicant's request for an increased height limit of 56 feet, limiting the project to 50 feet. No one discussed the 45-foot rear step down. No one, no one, certainly no one said it should be removed, yet the ordinance that was originally put forward before the city council did not include that 45-foot step down. The findings in support of the project's approval require a 45-foot step down in the rear. The Wilshire Community Plan contains policies that require new commercial development to protect existing stable, single-family and low-density residential neighborhoods from encroachment by higher-density residential uses and other uses that are incompatible as to scale and character. The Wilshire Community Plan also requires improved land use transitions and protection of existing character of residential neighborhoods. The mitigated negative declaration for this project also relies upon a finding that the step back of the top floor adjacent to the residential uses will reduce the appearance of the building on the eastern and southern vantage points, including the 45-foot step down in the rear will accomplish what is required to protect the adjacent residents, and we support Councilmember Coretts' motion to adopt the 45-foot rear step down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you, there's a motion to adopt the August 6, 2013 ordinance for a project in my district. The new ordinance reflects the actions taken by Plum within the, with the clarifying of one aspect, which was just mentioned, to approve a height district change from 1VL to 1D with a 50-foot height limit in the front and 45-foot in the rear delimitation in height. It was always intended to be 45 feet in the rear in deference to the needs of the impacted neighbors, and I ask for an aye vote.
Okay, no other speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. So ordered. Mr. Coretts?
President, if I could ask that go forthwith.
Okay, forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, this takes council back to general public comment.
Donna, Donna Pearlman, please.
Yeah, it's public comment back again. I shouldn't have let you go away for a moment, anyway, because it takes me two hours to be able to get here. It's good to see Nuri Martinez. Wait to see her here, yeah.
Public comment.
Public comment. Okay, so what I want to say is we need to bring back Van Nuys video conference. We need to bring it back in the Valley, because it just shows how do you think of the Valley. The Valley is falling apart. The buses are running terrible in the Valley. There's some buses that only run an hour. It's not acceptable. And going along Buceta Boulevard, the buses are very sporadic. You never know when it's, when it's going to come. And we also, I can't talk to her right now. Anyway, um, so, and, anyway, all this would could be fixed, and people could be speaking about what they believe if we can bring back the videos, Van Nuys video conferences. I know Nuri Martinez would love to see that back. So I should be speaking from the Valley. I took a whole month off because I couldn't get myself to come all the way, and it took down to the, like, two hours to be able to bring down where a lot of the buses, there's no accessibility for the handicap, and the ADA doesn't have the money to be able to sponsor it. So we need to have the city council sponsoring and stop wasting money on a lot of different projects and resolutions and caring about what the Valley brings. I believe there's going to be a lot of people did, will speak to, speaking to the Valley, and we need to have the issues brought up, like the buses, the building, everybody's is going out of business over in the Valley. We got about 10 places along Ventura that are...
Donna, thank you. What's your neighborhood council, Donna? Do you go to their meetings?
Uh, yeah.
Good. All right, well, I'll see you after council. I want to encourage you. Thank you. Candido, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Candido Maris. With me is John Camaro, Van Nuys neighborhood council, and Mr. Jeff Piper, St. Elizabeth's in Van Nuys. First of all, on item 27, I want to thank Mr. Parks and Mr. Blumentfeld for watching out for the children of this great city. You know, it's easy to condemn children. It's easy to convict them and say that they're evil and they're bad, but what you did today, sir, is a step forward in saving our children for the future, because each and every one of you have children or grandchildren one day who can be in jeopardy of ending up in this kind of a situation. And what I want to thank is our chief of police for having his staff stand here and say, you know what? I haven't read this, I haven't seen this, and I need more time. So thank you, sir, for your honesty on that. So again, thank you, folks, for, Mr. Parks and Mr. Blumentfeld, for working hard, because again, every child is in danger in the city. It's a, it's a very difficult city to live in. But we're really here to thank Ms., or to praise Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez, you did a wonderful job on Saturday. It was a great event. It was amazing. I mean, we had the mayor there, he was there, he had a great crowd, and it was important what Ms. Melina said, that in 20 years, as we sit here and we look around us, what do we have? We have one woman here. That's not right. We should, in the future, I think we'll see more of that. And that's why it's important for us to go into our communities and reach into the communities and recognize those in our communities who for years have done everything possible to make our communities great and safe. And that's why in October of last year, we became, we came before the city council and we presented the name of Ms. Monica Benavides, who has done everything possible for the neighborhood of Van Nuys, for the community of Van Nuys. And we submitted, there are almost 1,500 signatures in support of her in December. We gave it to then-former councilman, Mr. Tony Cardenas. And then in July, Ms. Martinez, we gave you from the neighborhood council. the Neighborhood Council, we gave you an approval by the Neighborhood Council stating we would like to see that. So, we will be back in October and in December.
Thank you very much. Richard Robinson, where's Richard? Richard, get up here right now, Richard. Here we go, Richard.
Mr. President, members. President Obama met with the Group of Twenty last week discussing a Marshall Plan to protect freedom and democracy for all the people. Sir, when the people take back the Congress from the greedy and have help from the Supreme Court, then President Obama will be able to get another stimulus after midterm elections. He then is able to utilize a New Deal, returning millions of people back to work, making jobs available for those who do not have education. He will not have to worry about the opposition. After we win the war against terrorists in Afghanistan, we will not have to go to war in Syria. After we bring the troops home next year, we will be able to utilize the peace dividend. Then, the people will have food and homes worldwide. With God's help, no more war. Thank you.
Thomas Varela, is that correct, correctly, Thomas?
Varela in English and Varela in Espanol.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Varela. I'm a resident of 2483 Vedder Street in CD14. Good morning, lady and gentlemen of the council. I'm here to speak on behalf of the preservation of Hazard Park. Some of you may remember Hazard Park in the early 1960s, when the Veterans Administration wanted to build their hospital in Hazard Park in Boyle Heights, CD14, in exchange for some property in the West Side. Something similar is happening today. USC, the School of Health Sciences, is trying to build a road through Hazard Park. They want to widen Solder Street, take down a line of 11 sycamore trees that have been there for 80 years, on and on and on. There's so many implications going on in regard to this land grab that's taking place, and I'm just asking the council members to please get informed about this issue from the perspective of the community. I'm a lifelong resident and property owner, been there all my life. USC has got a lot of power. I don't know if there's anybody in here who has not been influenced by them in one manner or another. And their maneuvers are, well, we don't have the power to outmaneuver them. But, and they're re-titling the project to accelerate it. I wish you would really inform yourselves and find out what's going on there. Hazard Park is an historical place where Sal Castro and thousands and thousands, rather, hundreds and thousands of students from the East Side walked out in 1968 that kicked off a movement that made it possible for a lot of these people here to be members of this council. A lot of people aspire to success. You all remember Sal Castro. This is a very historical park. We also have in that area a wetland where $200,000 was donated, was given by the federal government several years ago, and it was given to Park and Highland Park. I can go on and on, but I just wanted to bring to your attention the issue of Hazard Park. SC has already started their demolition process of our handball court there, and I hope you'll get informed and help us in some way to preserve Hazard Park.
Teresa Marquez. Teresa here? All right, last card, Herman, Mr. Herman.
For the record, Mr. Herman, the constituent. And as we speak and say, here's a comment from the Department of Justice. Does the ADA apply to state and local government? Title II of the ADA prohibits discrimination, as you may all know, whether it's sexual harassment or whether it's someone within your department not wanting to remove something from a sidewalk or a street. And yes, Mr. Weezer, it's a big deal, it's a sexual harassment. But it is a big deal when you cannot fund the public for its needs of ADA. It is a big issue. On our streets, there are many broken sidewalks. But let me finish this here. So, we're on the right page, because I've talked to the Department of Justice, and they say, you're in the wrong, City of L.A., hindering the impairment of people with disability. It is a discrimination. Going on, individuals with disabilities in all programs, activities, and services of public entities, it applies to all state and local governments, that their departments and agencies, like this agency. Got your attention now. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. This burns me up. You can't even open up an avenue at the Van Nuys City Hall, right? Why? Because you prohibit people from speaking, people from having access to their own community. Because what? Oh, well, he doesn't look impaired. Do we have to look retarded to be impaired? No. So, look after our interests, City of Los Angeles, because the big problem is here. If you don't get off your feet and do your checks and balances and correct the problems for our safety on streets and public sidewalks, the Department of Justice will hold back those fundings under DOD to question and audit how you spend our tax-paying dollars, and when you make up a bogus nonsense booklet this thick of how to make money to repair our streets and sidewalks. Ridiculous.
That completes public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, a special one motion has been circulated, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
The special one has been circulated. City Attorney for comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the state legislature gutted and amended AB 604 in order to incorporate the substance of previously stalled bills, AB 473 and SB 439, regarding medical marijuana issues. Immediate action is required in order for the city to state its position before Friday, due to the impending end of the legislative session. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Okay, we have no cards on this. For the findings, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes. The matters before us, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we've been monitoring this legislation, and in fact, some of it came before the council recently under SB 439. And we were advised at that time that it was going to be a two-year bill. Less than two weeks later, it's in a process called gut and amend, which now creates SB 604. It's a 39-page document which we've attached to the motion. Certainly, the CLA has not had a chance to review it. We tried to look at it on a cursory basis over the weekend, and it appears as though all of the hard-fought efforts of the Supreme Court to allow municipalities to ban marijuana locations seems to, at minimum, be impaired, if not eliminated. The hard-fought effort to reduce the number of narcotic locations or dispensaries in the City of Los Angeles through Prop D appears, again, to be overwritten by this legislation. What's unfortunate in reading it is that it also gives a clear impression that they've redefined the word dispensary to where it is an official location, but they do not limit the access or sales at other locations, such as places such cultivation, operations, even the sale, as long as it's not at a storefront, appears to be open for legitimate narcotic sales. They also have chose to add, not add, into the legislation to deal with fraud as it relates to doctors. They certainly do not require that the patient's primary care physician or physician whom the primary care has referred is a part of this analysis, much as, such as all other medications that are prescribed. They also, appears that they have set in motion an ability to open up large-scale retail facilities to sell marijuana, even providing a taxation model. Just on the basis of the short term and the 39-page report, it would appear as though this city should take a position to oppose AB 604. Both of these bills, AB 473 and SB 439, neither one of them receives sufficient support in their own legislative bodies to be moved. But at the last moment on Friday, they've been put into a new bill, and our understanding is they're moving forward for Thursday to move this to the governor's office. I think if you read recently a published document on August the 29th by the Department of Justice, who gave guidance as it relates to dealing with marijuana, to take one sentence out of their three-page letter, it says, "In providing this guidance, it drew distinction between the seriously ill and their caregivers, on the one hand, and large-scale for-profit commercial enterprises, on the other, and advised that the latter continue to be appropriate targets for federal enforcement and prosecution." So, I think as we move forward on this, it would appear that several things are missed, such as our ability to maintain our own zoning laws. It certainly violates the principle of home rule and reduces many of the hard-fought battles to reduce or maintain a level of dispensaries in jurisdictions. And I would ask that we move forward on this and oppose AB 604, as it is contrary to all of the good work we've done in this area over the last several years.
All right, we're going to have a couple of public comment cards, but I want to have Sharon Soa at the center table, please, if we have any questions on this. Mr. Coretts is on the queue. Mr. Coretts, do you want to speak to this now, Mr. Coretts?
Yes, I don't necessarily disagree with this, but based on my 10 minutes of reading of this very lengthy document, I don't think on an issue this complicated that I would necessarily be ready to vote "aye." I would just ask that we move this to tomorrow's agenda and give my office and others a chance to do a little bit of analysis, especially if you think this is going to be heard on Thursday. Based on a really cursory read, I'm inclined to support what you're doing, but I'd like a shot at knowing more. And assuming you have done more than the 10 minutes of analysis than I have, I'd at least like to hear what your take is on this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Actually, we haven't had much of an opportunity to review this bill either. This one was a gut and amend bill that was released on Friday. With regard to the two previous bills that this AB 604 was based on, the council did not take a position on either one of those bills. So, if it is continued one day, that would give us an opportunity to review AB 604 more in detail.
Good. So, members, I know we have a few members on the queue. Do we want to continue this one day? I think this would make sense, CLA, to look at that. Recommended by Mr. Wesson, we're going to continue this one day. Mr. Kocorion, you're on the queue. Continue it, Mr. Parks, one day.
I just have one question. I don't understand the process from the city. Can we get our position heard in one day? If we make a decision tomorrow by Thursday, can it get to Sacramento?
Yes.
Yes.
Fine.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney. On the advice of your city attorney, do I hold the public comment cards for tomorrow or today? All right, I'll do it today. Mr. Kocorion?
I guess this is sort of a point of order on the special one. Do we know that, in fact, this is going to be heard on Thursday? It's not going to be heard tomorrow, is it?
My understanding, it was Thursday. But again, we also were told it was a two-year bill two weeks ago. So, it's up in the air. Well, we were told Thursday.
It is our understa, the legislative session does end this Friday.
Well, I know. And I'm going in the other direction. I'm concerned that if we do defer this, we may miss an opportunity if the legislature decides to put it up for a floor vote tomorrow. So, that's true. Okay, then tomorrow will be fine.
Tomorrow, we'll do it. All right, Mr. Coretts.
I would just suggest to have even a better chance of it being considered on Wednesday. Perhaps we could call this first on our agenda tomorrow and get it heard and move it up there as quickly as possible in the morning.
Very good. We could do that. They do have telephone service up there in Sacramento, so we could always call, which would be good. Thank you so much. Do we want to do public comment right now? We have three cards, one minute each. Candido, please. Mr. Herman? No, no, I'm calling your name now, Mr. Candido. You want to go now? I'm calling you now. I got it.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilmembers, for allowing us to speak on this. You know, I've been here since 1989, off and on. And for many years, I was here every day. I've never seen anything so confusing. It's amazing that we can't get a handle of this. I'm not for marijuana, I'm not against marijuana. The issue is, is that it has been proven that it does help certain people, and when you're ill and you're sick and you have the ability to have something that can help you, then you need it. There are other, not all dispensers are equal. There are some that are part of the community and they're doing wonderful things within the community. Now, some people out there might say, oh, my God, what are you talking about? Marijuana is illegal. Colorado legalized it, another state up north legalized. I can't tell you what's legal or not. All I can say is that we need to really air everything out and make sure. And when I hear, "Council," Mr. Coretts, when you say you've only read it for 10 minutes, I just need you to, I know you can do a better job than that, sir. 10 minutes is not long enough. This is too important of an issue that affects too many people, Mr. President. Let's do this properly. Mr. Wesson, your leadership is needed here. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Herman?
Well, the City of Los Angeles, you constituents, you hear the confusion and the 10 minutes by Mr. Coretts just to review something that's very important, litigation that they've been discussing for how long, from the time that I've been here to the time that I'm back. So, I say to you, question your councilmen, question every councilman here, especially like Coretts, who says, oh, let me postpone it. No, don't postpone it. You had plenty of time, like you did with the Mural Ordinance, right? The Mural Ordinance. And what do you do? You lollagag, you waste taxpayers' dollars over nonsense. That's pathetic. You should come up with remedies that better our communities. And the same way Mr. Weezer gives all these liquor licenses and puts marijuana shops in Caesar Chavez. Mr. Labonge, even in Hollywood, they're there, too. They should be questioned, but let's do it for the purpose as mentioned, for medical purpose, so be, like my brother who died. Thank you.
Donna Pearman, Donna, last card, last speaker.
Yeah, this should be a subject that I should be speaking in the Valley. But anyway, we have to really figure out exactly how we're going to be able to, be able to let everybody that lives all over the Valley and a short amount of collectives to be able to get the medication that they need. Because there's so many places that, you know, about 10 places to be able to find maybe one particular strain that somebody needs. So, you know, you got to be able to look at all of the disabilities and be able to, be able to see that they can get their medication. And now, just running on through, but if you're going to do, close these downs, we should be able to figure out and start doing it because, and figure out exactly why we'll still stay open, so they could be laid fair. Because this is not right, how we're doing this, just leaving this, just leaving it like it is and doing it the last minute. It's not right.
All right, that's it, Donna. Thank you so much. This closes the public comment on this. We thank you for the public comment. This is on the desk for tomorrow, and we ask that we take it up early. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
So ordered. Any announcements? Members, any announcements? Remember tomorrow is 9/11. There's various events throughout the City of Los Angeles. And remember those who lost their lives and perished on September 11, 2001. Big event tomorrow evening, Station 88 in the San Fernando Valley and Sherman Oaks. All the public is invited. Now, we have any adjourned motions? Everybody, please rise. Mr. Westin?
Members, we, as we rise for adjourned motions, unless someone has been instructed by Mr. Sadio to adjourn in the memory of his dad, I think we should defer to Gilbert to see how he wants us to handle this, and I have not chatted with him yet. So I would think that we would see what he wants to do, how he wants to handle it, and then maybe tomorrow we will adjourn. So with that said, I turn it back to Mr. Labonge.
Gilbert's dad was 84 years old and was a great inspiration to him. Let's remember him every day. Adjourned motions now, we look to Mr. Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I ask that we adjourn today in the memory of La Francis Arnold. La Francis was a licensed real estate broker for 36 years and a member of organized real estate for the last 35 years. Arnold served as president of the Los Angeles County Board of Realtors in 2008 and was the first and the first-appointed-at-large National Association of Realtors representative for the Rancho Southwest section in 2006. He was first appointed car director in 1994 and was named Realtor of the Year by his local association in 1979 and 2008. He served on the car committees at the leadership level, including the Executive Committee, Strategic Planning Committee, Housing Committee, Real Estate Finance Committee, and the Equal Opportunity Diversity Committee. He was active in his community, served as chairman of the Linwood Economic Development Committee, and was recently appointed to the Board of Los Angeles County Board of Real Estate. A former defensive lineman for the Denver Broncos, Arnold followed his mother, Evelyn, into real estate in 1976. He became a broker the following year and a general contractor in 1979. Together, he and his mother built excellence, realty, and all communities' escrow services. Most recently, Arnold was a candidate for the California State Assembly in the 62nd District. He survived by his mother Evelyn, wife Cheryl, two sons, Jason and La Francis II, and two grandchildren. La Francis was laid to rest yesterday at Inwood Park Cemetery. In lieu of flowers, contributions can be made to the Car Scholarship Foundation or the Car Portability Housing Fund. He was a generous man who will be sorely missed by the community.
Thank you. Members on this side, Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with great sadness that I ask this council to join the UCLA community and friends and family of Nick Pescual and mourning his death in a tragic accident. As a 20-year-old freshman wide receiver for the Bruins, he was hit by a car and killed this past Sunday morning while walking in San Clemente. In high school, he'd been a three-year starter at San Clemente High. He was a redshirt freshman and a walk-on, a 5'7" receiver who made the team through hard work and never gave up, even though he was among players who are almost certainly much larger and more well-known. His teammates gave him the name Pac-Man, and it must have been because he was someone who just kept moving forward and whose life was full of dynamic energy and resolve. UCLA coach Jim Morris said, "This is a tragic loss. Nick was an outstanding young man who had a positive impact on everyone who knew him. He was a great teammate who was loved and respected by the entire team. Our thoughts are with his family." So sad that a promising young life would be cut so short. It's a terrible tragedy for the city and the UCLA community and his family, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Such a tragedy for a young man's life taken away. This particular individual lived 92 years. He was born in Oklahoma. He's famous because that's what they did back in Los Angeles on television, sold cars. Cal Worthington, 92 years old. I think it was 517 when South Lakewood, if I remember the location of his first dealership, because all they did is drill it in. And Cal Worthington was much-loved, had six children, nine grandchildren. I met him once out at the Palomino on Langisham, and a very personable guy. Let's remember a fixture in Southern California television life and one of the first of many who always sold cars, Cal Worthington. Members, this completes our session today. Go ahead and serve the city well, and every day's a blessing. Thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.